Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Can we please stand for the pledge?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation in the God indivisible.
Good evening, everybody. Councilman Snyder is excused tonight. And we'll start with our work session. And the very first item is the open development area at seven fifty-seven Center. Larry Rowan is here. Did you have anything that you wanted to talk to us about on it, Larry? Or if you could grab that mic, yeah, talk into that mic.
Okay, I'll do that.
Good.
Great. I'm up the new building. Bad kind of house.
Okay, okay. Any questions?
I don't think so. I think if I'm not. So I, if I'm not wrong about this, so the CBA approved your variance for the build, that wasn't an issue, but your lot is an old game. That's what we actually.
Yes.
Yes. So if you had any, um, feedback, I know your daughter lives in the front, you own several of the lots surrounding you.
Yeah.
You had an issue during.
No, all in their report.
Um, I guess, and then the driveway you share with.
It's a deed right away. My brother wants.
Okay.
And, you know, he has good stuff on one side, I have good stuff on the other side.
Okay. So who actually owns?
We both.
You both, so it's a deed right away. Okay, I thought that meant one.
No, 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 no. Deed right away is both.
Okay.
They're both get separate tax code for that driveway.
Okay. Glad, glad I pulled that out. That's great. All right, that's all the questions.
Thank you, sir.
And so you're, you said it's your brother-in-law that owns the property right next door that you shared the driveway with?
Yes, sir.
And either one of you sell it, uh, they have right away.
Good, Larry. Nope. I'll just add that, um, the planning board, um, approved it with the variance that were approved by the zoning board of appeals in September fourteenth. And, uh, Tim Stroth amends motion to add contingency that existing driveway bump outs are confirmed in all it, um, all the personal property currently on the site, not associated with the new structure stored within the new structure. Is that? Okay, so the bump outs will be done?
Both are there.
Okay.
So there are four bump outs or almost five, there are five bump outs on this driveway. They're not regularly spaced at a hundred and fifty feet, but the length of this driveway only needs three bump outs. So they have more areas to pass by than is necessary. So I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay. And then, um, the other thing was just that the items that are not in the barn right now are there that are out there would be put in. So that's. Yeah. I think the thing that they were saying is that it, it becomes part of the barn, inside the barn, not, yeah, 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 okay. Good. All right, so, um, we'll put this on the agenda for setting a public hearing. And, uh, we set a public hearing for next, um, meeting. And then we can, uh, we can vote on it at that meeting, uh, if there isn't any objection or anything that we have to deal with, we usually vote on it. Okay, very good.
Okay, great guys.
Thank you. All right, next we have the temporary use permit request for soccer event fee is that you come on up? Are you ready? So, yeah, Rick is, um, asking that we waive the two hundred dollar per day event fee, which the board has done in the past for, um, smaller events of this nature. We don't want to set a precedent for the larger events, but this is like a three-hour event. Uh, they've paid their application fees. But, um, in our, the way we do it, we charge another two hundred dollars, and I think we've waived that in the past for these smaller events. Anything from the board?
This is a matter of record, I know we discussed this last time. You're not asking to preserve the entire space, welcome to this space, you're not taking over the field. Flowers and somebody even write age group, that is correct.
You're welcome. Thank you. So we'll put that on the agenda. Next, we have an application for temporary use permit. I believe this is just a change of, uh, date from, um, to December third. It was in November, correct? Or, no, October. It was in October and now it's being changed to December third, two thousand twenty-two. This is the Western New York Cycle Cross event, um, to be held at the nicely JP nicely West Falls Park. Uh, any issues, questions from the board?
Uh, we, he's done a good job at those events before. I have no.
They've done a great job.
Question him.
The, uh, I mean, I'm sure it's going to be weather related, uh, that time of year, but it's something they'll handle. Okay.
Yeah, we have the insurance, so.
And we have their insurance. Next, um, I don't have those. You have my person?
Yeah.
So the bid results for the senior center door project.
We received one bid in the amount of eighty-eight thousand dollars. Back when we wrote the grant, it was anticipated that the cost would be about seventy-six thousand. We got several quotes back then, um, and now it's above that by about twelve thousand. Part of the grant was an LED lighting project also that we haven't gone out to bid for. Um, so if we take the ninety-five thousand dollar grant, take away the eighty-eight thousand, it leaves us with seven thousand for the LED lighting. So we have to decide if we're going to go head with the LED lighting. Um, see what it comes in at, use ARPA funds or some other funding to cover that.
Did you talk to Paul Deal Aaron?
I did not get a chance to talk to him yet.
Um, I think my recommendation to the board would be to accept the bid for the doors. And then maybe go out and see what the LED lighting would cost on a separate, can we do that on a separate?
We have to do it on a separate bid.
Separate bid. And just see what the difference would be and where we could recoup that money from.
If the LED and all are nothing profit. When they're, you say LED light. It was involved, obviously.
It's, it's the bulbs and the, um, bells, okay? Um, and we were, we're looking to do the whole senior center and adult daycare center, uh, which results in quite a bit of savings for the town in electric. Plus, it would go into our, our climate smart.
Yep. Was, was this something that we put in the application to the grant that would jeopardize the grant money or anything? I mean, could we say that we would do this as a part of our grant application, the LED lights as well? And therefore, are we tied to doing LED light changing?
That's what we have to find out from the county.
So we might not want to go forward then today if we unless we're willing to commit the funds ourselves to, to cover that, right?
The doors need to be replaced.
Mm-hmm.
The lighting is, doesn't have to be, but the doors absolutely have to be replaced.
But when we applied for the grant, did we, as a part of it, did we put in there that we were going to change the lights as well?
We did, but we've had other grants in the past that have exceeded, the first bid has exceeded what we had planned on, so we just did that part of the project.
I think we can go ahead and do the doors without doing the lights. And to say we, you know, we, it, it was cost prohibited. Now we can go ahead and try to get another grant if this doesn't work, another grant, or we can take what's left over from this grant and fund it through, um, our capital project fund balance or ARP or anything else. Or we don't do it this year.
So worst case scenario, if we are tied to that, if the county comes back and says we do have to change the LED lights, what was the estimate on that part of the project? Was it?
We don't, we don't know yet.
Um, yeah, no, the estimate was, it was about fourteen or seventeen thousand. I don't have the exact figure in front of me.
Right, so we're, we'd have to put in ten thousand of ARPA or capital funds, worst case scenario, right?
Yes.
Wish I think you, you'll recoup the savings and I, I can't tell you how many years, but it's, it's LED is where it's at. So I would recommend we, we go ahead and get this, get the doors. Accept the bid for the doors tonight. So you guys okay with that? All right. Next, we have the appointment of the Climate Smart Community Task Force, and I started printing some of their, um, resumes out, but, um, would you want?
Yeah, if you, just a few words. So we did put out, um, try to open it up to the community. Um, this is uh, the resolution based on what was provided by the, by Matt, um, and, uh, Jason from the UB, uh, University of Buffalo, whatever department they're in. Um, and so this should suffice to create the, the, the Climate Smart Community Task Force, um, within it. I'm appointed as the coordinator, and then we appoint the other people in here. If we were to change that, we would just need to do another resolution like this to change those people in the future. Um, one thing to point out here is that we are including two student representatives, which would be a position that would turn over. Um, and we, we can decide how that appointment would, would happen. Um, and then we are appointing two representatives from ACES to be a part of this. So four positions are coming from, um, community organizations. And then the other three are at large appointments and they have their, um, job titles in here, not because that's the reason for their appointment, but to show their experience and background. So I don't know if that's.
You think, and I'm just, this might be stupid, but, uh, planning board, zoning board, do, do we need anybody representation there?
We, we don't need, um, we can always add someone like that. Uh, Cornell, I spoke to the Cornell Cooperative and they would like to have one person on as an advisory position, which means they just show up and we listen to them. Um, we can do the same with planning and CBA. Um, we could officially appoint one member if we wanted to. Uh, the only thing is that the committee is five to seven people.
Oh, okay.
So we're at the, we're at the limit right now.
Isn't Gene already on the planning board?
Gene, Gene is on the planning board, yes, but if you, if you wanted to, I think Jim, you wanted to have an official appointment of someone.
So that's good. Good. All right.
And then, uh, it's also was recommended that, um, someone from the code enforcement officers' office be, um, involved in those meetings, um, when possible. And I spoke to Liz, and she, um, she was okay with putting her here as in, in an advisory role, unless that's changed. Yeah. So.
What's one more meeting, Liz?
But I promise that they will be lengthy and at awkward times. So I think we should be okay. Yeah.
Thank you for doing. All right, good. Uh, questions from the rest of the board? Good, good job, Luke. Next, uh, two thousand twenty-three tentative budget changes. Uh, did you all have uh, time to look at them, understand them? Actually, they're good, they're, they're good changes. Um, we, um, because of the increase in interest rates, we're going to be seeing a lot more interest on our money, um, that we had to put somewhere and, uh, this explains if anybody needs me to explain it, otherwise, uh, we'll just be good. Um, what we have to do tonight is approve the changes and then adapt uh, or the preliminary budget. Good. Guys are easy tonight. Uh, I gave you the thing on the architect expense. And, um, when we originally started looking at, uh, using some of the upper money for the pool and getting ideas what we should do, we had this, uh, obviously came to a big plan of a big building. It was way out of sight money-wise and anyways, um, the architect renderings and all that stuff was thirteen thousand five hundred and so when we changed everything, they gave us a credit up to what we've spent already. And then this will be a not to exceed feat of, a fee of eighty-five hundred dollars to do, which the scope of the work you can see is, uh, the building negotiations, conduct site work through, walk through, um, the, all the meetings, um, I don't have to read all these, you actually. So any questions on that?
And we just got um, I don't, certainly don't well, have done good work, but, um, but much as we've done with legal. Like
And as we go forward on other projects, it's, um, that's fair. That's fair. Okay. Uh, what was the other thing we were going to add tonight?
West Falls.
Yeah, we're gonna, you want to do that? No, we're not. We got, we got time now, we could. Can you do that now, Liz? Okay, we're going to do a, um, PowerPoint on the, um, West Falls grant. And I think.
There's a lot of pressure, uh, pressure, and we're only a member of the audience. So we need to pay attention to them.
Yeah, I hear a lot of time to time.
There will be questions.
To be, be clear, we only want your participation if it's positive, though, so.
I love these Tuesday meetings because no one hi, by the way.
Hi, Jim. Sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, so, um, as we mentioned before, uh, we did submit the application for the New York Forward Grant. Um, I don't know if we ever put that online or if we need to put the, the full submission online, um, but it was a long process that we worked with, um, with Alma Brown, um, of Heritage Resources with a lot of work, probably, you know, forty hours a week trying to put everything together. Um, and it culminated in passing the first step and getting an interview downtown at the Empire State Development Corp. Uh, where Joe Connor and I attended, and we put together this presentation, um, just to, to say that when we started reaching out to the community, it was unclear if we'd be able to get enough projects to have the four and a half million ask. And, uh, our final application had an ask of almost fifteen million, um, for the community. At the, uh, after the interview was over, the feedback was, uh, that they were impressed with the amount of nonprofit, the mix of nonprofit, private business and municipal projects that we had put together. I think that was unique in our, in our proposal, so. Um, as a part of this, I enjoy, you want anything to add, anything?
I guess, I, I proud to read. They were all business.
Yeah.
So, but, uh, good. Definitely learning experience.
Yeah. So this was the presentation, um, if you flip to the next slide. This will give you an idea of the, of this, of the application. I think if you just, yeah. Go back and click on it. So this is the area, um, that we applied for, and if we are unsuccessful this time around, this is just round one, should be coming up every year. And we'd like to thank William and Paul from Fontaine's, Paul in Fontaine's. Holt's, Aubrey, Ernst Architects for helping us out with this part of the, the application. You see here from number fourteen is the Conservation Club. Um, along Bridge Street. And then going down to the, the, the denser part of Main Street. Twelve through two. Yeah, you want to go left, yeah. Twelve through two, and then up to the former depot at one, and the red line is of course the Rails to Trails project.
Yeah, I, I think one of our motivations, one of the selling factors we had is that we're going to, uh, going to be successful with this grant. If you get a, uh, corridor, I won't be wholly dependent on particular traffic. Uh, most of the things we're talking about, uh, growing, uh, including Westfall Conservation Society and great product.
So the first question that we needed to answer was why Westfalls? Do I go to the next slide? Uh, why, why the community is ready for the opportunity? And one of the great things about Westfalls is that there are six nonprofit organization, community organizations that are all working to make Westfalls a better place. You can see them, this is on the, on the left side here. Everything that we have done with the advisory board was very impressive to the committee, having that community and the numbers that we were getting at those meetings. Um, also the, the sort of branding that we've been able to do, um, with the local community. You see the falls, it's on the welcome sign and the hat. All shows strong sense of place, which is another box we need to tick. And you see, of course, the sculpture that we, uh, propose and still are working on right there in the bottom left. All are, are showing that there is a strong group of individuals behind, um, the, the, the part of the community. And so, um, and also that they, they have a unique identity that's, uh, different from East Aurora Orchard Park or any of the neighboring communities. For the next one there, yep. Some of the new investments that have happened over the last, um, couple of years. Of course, Scott Beeler has invested eight hundred fifty thousand dollars into the former Grist Mill facility. Um, that was one of the projects that was proposed in this. The Blueberry Treehouse Farm and Cafe, including the buildings in front that are being renovated, but also the, the work in the back. Um, the Westfalls Depot that was purchased for seventy thousand dollars, um, the Westfalls General Store, which is the building across from the library, um, the Center for the Arts, um, the, the Westfalls Holden Community Library, the Towns investment there, and then the Westfalls Conservation Society, which is a great asset to the community as well. We all use those to show that the community is investing in itself. One of the more impressive aspects that they liked was the Blueberry Treehouse Farm and the cooperation that they've doing, especially including the Falls Fest this weekend with the Westfalls Commu-, uh, Center for the Arts. Um, one of the projects was to expand and create a sculpture park in the back, which is a cultural and art component to the loan. That, uh, was one of the main factors. The next one. Um, we also were able to show that we have a supportive local government. Um, all of the zoning work that we did worked in our favor, uh, by having a Westfalls overlay showing that it is a unique community and the local government, we are interested in preserving that. Of course, our Climate Smart Community pledge that we took last meeting, important to showing that we are committed to be a green, green community, the Greater Aurora IDA, um, working with Rural Outreach Center, um, our memorandum to support the Rails to Trails project, our application for the comprehensive plan, and then our open, having an open space committee that is active, we're all strong selling points for our application. Yep, part of the next one. So we were trying to make the point that the time really is now to do this, um, with DOT investing over four million, with us pursuing the comprehensive plan, with the per private investments that you have coming into the area, including Rails to Trail, but also of course the Gris, former Gris Mill, the Center for the Arts, and the Conservation Society, which is planning on doing a new roof. And then the one point seven million, I think, um, expansion slash renovation of the Westfalls Fire Hall. I'll show that really now is the time that we need to get these additional funds in.
And just like may touch real quick, I'm really excited to meet about the Conservation Society expansion plan. So they currently serve, um, people with very this big trap. If they can get, they're part of their planning division group is to be able to expand that service so they can offer same archery. If those all members. I think that's, that will make that.
Yeah. Yeah. Next slide there, yeah. What makes our community unique? Let's see the, one of the, one of the main selling points that we pushed, and I think that landed, is the cultural diversity in the community. Um, having a, of wide range of activities, um, outdoor, indoor, uh, educational, um, you know, sports, outdoor, I guess, activities, um, then the Center for the Arts and all the good work you've been able to do. Um, go to the next slide, of course, the rich history of Westfalls. Also, we, we had to cut Connor short on this one. I think he would have, could have talked for about four hours, but we didn't let him speak at all. So, uh, next one. And then, of course, that you can see the community based on the surveys that we did, we received about sixty surveys back that what the community is looking for is affordable housing in a rural pseudo-walkable community. The people that are living within that corridor like that there is a, is a, a sidewalk, but we're often complaining that they were not able to get local amenities or to be able to, you know, not drive to get what they needed.
The only place in East Aurora that has.
In Aurora, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, also it serves as a micro-regional center, and of course, all the historical, cultural, natural agricultural assets. We spoke about the sense of community, and it is a small gateway along that corridor, even though it's in the corner of our time town, that serves a broader area, so. Next one there. Um, the big ideas, so what would the grant do if we are successful? Um, this is what we put together again, based on the surveys in the community, in the community meetings, looking for a walkable, green, green community with local amenities for the residents, for neighboring communities, a regional center with local amenities and a unique atmosphere with healthy activities. And for visitors, a healthy, family-oriented outdoor and cultural activities is a, a small destination. That's the rails, that's the Conservation Society, that's the, uh, Center for the Arts, that's the private businesses like the Blueberry Treehouse Farm, um, all, all working together. Um, as a part of this, the projects that were proposed, uh, changes to the Main Street, um, including the Main Street itself, so working on sidewalks, lighting, signage, uh, crosswalks, all those types of things. That, uh, all, who, who helped us with the funds? I get so confused, yeah. Helped us with those designs. Um, we're thankful to them. Attractive cultural installations, including the Sculptural Park, the Sculpture Park that I mentioned. Um, newly proposed green spaces, so the Veterans Park, what we had planned there with the sculpture, a new playground and trail down to the water and using that of that sort of amenities for the community, connecting that to the Rails to Trail. A multi-use trail with connections on and off the trail and a remodel of historical train depot, um, which needs, needs quite a bit of work. Um, inclusive outdoor sports and cultural activities, including ADA complain, archery and trap, lodging options, a regional cultural center, which would be the Center for the Arts, and the Historic Library slash meeting space. Really, all of those submissions were made, um, to, to make improvements and become or packing, packaging it all together to put those into the general direction that Westfalls residents, um, had reported they wanted to go. So if we do get it, it'd be really, really exciting to, uh, have those funds into the community. It would be our job to use those to try to encourage more private investment and, uh, but also to use it to help out the facility that we have there, the library. Um, and to improve the, the sidewalks. Um, hopefully the drainage issues will be improved by the state already. Um, the fire hall, we would be able to give some assistance for the community room, not for anything else, it wouldn't qualify, but still every, every bit helps. Um, so it was, uh, it was a great project, good to learn a lot of things and um, if we do not, are not successful, we can use these materials in, uh, Main Street grant coming next year. Um, and then the New York Forward Grant again would be every year from now on for the next five years.
When will they determine who gets that?
Very quick, so it'll be next couple of months. And then the design phase, so they would provide us with community, uh, planners and designers. We would go through, um, set up a community committee and go through what amount would go specifically to which projects, um, and then try to again leverage that to get private investment and understand, um, so. Um, and then try to again leverage that to get private investment and understand, um, so for the depot. It would be, you know, providing two hundred fifty thousand, maybe if there was a matching grant of two hundred fifty thousand by the owner, whatever it may be. Um, and then the projects would start around next summer.
Well. So.
Very good.
It's very exciting, actually.
I believe there were only about fifteen to twenty applications for the region. So while it is highly competitive, then we, um. Think we were able to put together a, a good application in a short amount of time and the response did seem to be positive. They did, yeah, they didn't take it easy on us, yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you. We, we didn't mention the dog bar, but that also was, was in there, that's the Westfalls Hotel. And so, um, we have been working with, with the owner to also look at historic renovations and making that ADA compliant as well, so. Yeah, it's exciting and the sidewalks, that is a big thing, we'd like to extend those up to Old Glenwood Road. And then also try to get one on the other side of, on the, on the. East side of the, of the street with some, um, with some crosswalks and then of course lighting and things like that.
All these things.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I appreciate that as a, you know, having a, an interest in that area as well and, and, um, kind of to. To go to Woodrick, our, uh, our featured guest here, uh, tonight. Was it, uh, there were, uh, when, um, the, the, the guy, the people that were organizing that got together, there was a meeting for the residents. There was, there was a second meeting for business owner, things like that. And both of those were very well attended, uh, they, they, uh, took, they actually filled out surveys. Uh, they, they asked questions, they answered questions, said what their concerns were, things like that. But the, a Westfall Center for the Arts is where Butterwood is, used to be. And that, one of the biggest problems, uh, was, uh, people who wanted to have a night, a night dinner. That dog bar couldn't really walk safely and still can't right now at the Blueberry or, or at our place, so getting sidewalks would be great. And the other thing that we discussed too, and I appreciate, um, you know, that, that the Grand Testament. A lot of the stuff that we're doing and other people are doing there, we're gonna do regardless as best we can without the grant. But, uh, it's gonna take us ten years. Um, doing little groups and drift and trying to get money here and there and donation volunteers and things like that. And speeding up the process, it would be terrific. And one of the things we're hoping to speed up is. Uh, at Westfall Center for the Arts, we're talking with the Griffith Sculpture Park people and that's. Uh, that, that's, uh, some people who are advising us and helping us with the, with the sculpture part.
Yeah.
People that will help you. Please let us know, uh, and, uh, I'm, I have no permission to do this, but I'm gonna throw someone's name out there that might.
Yes, we, we roped him in and are concerned that we are on, uh, sticky territory with his, uh, wife. Or rubbing him too much into Westfalls project, so, you know, he's a, he's a great asset for us in the community and. Um, I actually have seen him out walking now three or four times and, uh, I think I scare him when I pass by. He, he is using the, the sidewalk.
Oh, it's a great effort by you guys and everyone involved and, um, we can only hope to get that, but. Even if we don't and we, we go to next year, just the effort set and what has happened in that part of the town is great, so. It's, uh, it's good. All good. Anything else before we move on? All right, then we will start our regular meeting. And we're gonna be starting our regular meeting tonight with a public hearing for our. Two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four CDBG of funding. And this, uh, public hearing, we asked, uh, our, uh, all our residents and attendees. If they have any ideas for, uh, grant funding, so I'll open up the, uh, public hearing at seven ten. And, uh, I'll just go on, um, by saying that we have not, um, put anything in. Above and beyond the rural transit this year because we just got a grant for the doors. So we wouldn't be scoring very high anyway, so I think we're gonna vote, uh, later on and just adopting the. Uh, and approving the rural transit, uh, CDBG, so. If no one is gonna comment, then we'll close the public hearing at seven eleven. Uh, next we have the approval of the September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two work session in meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Jim, do I have a second?
I, I.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, motion by Joe, second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor? I opposed, that's carried. Next we have audience. Anything else for, okay. Unfinished business. Uh, setting the public hearing for seven fifty-seven Center Street. And we have, um, a notice of public caring. For the town of Aurora for the twenty-fourth day of October, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. At the Aurora Municipal Center. So, uh, do I have a motion to approve? With my Luke.
Second.
Like my Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next we have the wave of the. Um, two hundred dollar event fee. Um, for the next event soccer challenge. Do I have a motion to approve that?
We'll move.
Show my Jim.
Second.
Take my Joe, any discussion?
Yeah, I just say thanks to, to you and the other members of the Knights of Columbus for doing a community activity.
Yes.
Great thing.
One last thing, my, uh, son won two free throw contest at the Knights of Columbus and, uh, he still has a certificate, so, and one of his basketballs.
Well, you'll have to recruit yourself now.
So I'm surprised you're here after all the partering, partying after yesterday's holiday, right? Isn't that a big? No? No?
Hey, all in favor? I opposed. That is carried. Next we have the temporary use permit, uh, the cyclocross date change from. From the Western New York Cyclocross Club, uh, from October, I'm not sure what day that was. Can't read it, October to December third. Uh, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Joe. Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next we have the bid results for Senior Center Door Project and Martha, can I have you read those since I don't have them? And the company.
It's. We received one bid of eighty-eight thousand dollars from Alguayer Construction.
Eighty-eight thousand even?
Yeah.
Okay, and we put it out to bid only one person bid on it. I'll make, uh, do I have a motion to accept the bid? From, I didn't hear the construction company.
Alguayer.
Alguayer instruction for eighty-eight thousand dollars and the replacement of the senior center doors. Motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next we have new business and I just have to add the one item, the, um. Architect. Um. Minimum charge of eighty-five hundred or up to eighty-five hundred. For the. Um, construction. Consult, consultants, I guess, uh, for the finishing, finishing of the community project. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm on.
Which my Luke. Oh, I'm sorry, do I have a motion to add it?
To add it, yeah. So moved.
Motion by Luke.
Second.
Second by Joe. All in favor? I oppose and that is carried. So that'll be H. Almost did it on one motion. Next we have A and that is the Climate Smart Communities Task Force. And we have, um. There's no one here, do you guys want me to read the? Resolution or? We don't need to do that, right? Um. We have the names also, we got them in front of us, so I would just look for a motion to. Prove the resolution and the names as listed.
So moved.
Which my Luke. Like my Joe. Discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed and it's carried. Next we have the tentative budget changes is listed. If no one, if anyone wants me to read them, I will, otherwise, I, um, need a motion. To, um, approve the tentative budget changes for the two thousand twenty-three, um, budget. Okay, budget, uh, Joe.
Okay.
Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor? I, I oppose and that is carried.
Chuck's not here, we don't know who's. Motion in and second in, it's rough.
I gotta say, we, we, I think we need to add some chairs to our boardroom here. Okay, two thousand twenty-three preliminary budget, um, operating budget. We have to set the public caring. We have the legal notice to set it for the twenty-fourth. Day, um, Martha. The other one was set for seven, can I do the same? Okay. So, um, the twenty-fourth day of October at seven o'clock, it'll be, um, in the paper, do we have a motion? I'm moved, which my Luke. Like my Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed and that is carried. D is the debt reserve fund use, this is from Kathleen Moffett. And, uh, she respectfully requests approval to use debt reserve funds to make. The two thousand two hundred ninety-five dollar interest payment to Green County Commercial Bank for the Gleede Avenue Parking Lot Bond. The payment is due ten fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, these are monies that have already been set aside. Um, or bonds that were taken out when we owned the building. And when we sold the building, any monies that were owed were already set aside, um, to pay these as they come due, we couldn't pay them ahead. And, um, our auditor just asked that we. Um, make a note of it every year that that's what we're using for. That everyone understand? Uh, do I have a motion to approve? Joe?
Okay.
Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next we have the community pool improvements, ARPA Capital Project, this is from Kathleen Moffett. And she probably, she asked that we, we, uh, s- establish a capital project, H-ten community pool improvement. The some, the, some source of the funding will be ARPA funds. And she respectfully requests approval to transfer four hundred thousand dollars from the ARPA fund. And the A fund to Capital Project H-ten, um, that is just an estimate. Cause she has to come up with some kind of a number so that we have it there. Uh, because the bills will start coming in and we'll have to pay it and then when it's all said and done, we'll, um. Balance it.
Can we rename this as the Community Pool and Park Improvements? Cause this does include. We're gonna need, need to pay bills for the, the tennis courts, pickleball courts, the baseball restrooms, right, which are.
So you want a park added?
Yeah, that would cover.
How about community pool and park?
Yeah, yep.
How's that?
Yep, so Capital Project H-ten Community Pool and Park Improvements, that we wouldn't have to, uh.
Yep, I agree, that's good, good catch. Um, can we do that Martha, just in our motion, so. Motion would be to approve the transfer of four hundred thousand dollars and adding community pool and park improvements to it. Your motion? Joe? Jim? Make. Discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next we have, um, Grace Vigor. Um, she, um, was serving on the planning board as an alternate. And is resigning from the position, um, because she, um, was elected to the village board. So, um, unfortunately we're losing a good person there. Um, I've talked to the planning board and they said she was, she was very. Even though she was an alternate, she was very, um, good at participating in the meetings, so, um. Um, do we have a motion to accept her resignation? Which my Jim? Okay, any discussion? Um, I would just say, um. Put the feelers out if you know anybody, um, looking. Uh, for an alternate position. Um, it's open. All in favor? I opposed, that is carried. And next. This is a, the C B G project designation and I need a motion to authorize a supervisor to sign. Submit and execute contracts with the Erie County Community Development Block Grant Program for the following projects upon approval. Um, continuation of the Rural Transit Service Program. Do I have a motion?
We'll move.
Question by Jim.
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. That is carried. And next we have the architect proposal. Of construction administration services for renovations to, uh, Aurora Community Pool. And, uh, new public restroom addition. Um, not to exceed eighty-five hundred dollars and the scope of the work is as listed. Do I have a motion to approve?
Oh.
Motion by Joe. Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed and that is carried. Next we have the August and September two thousand twenty-two work requisition billing department. Dog control recreation. Um, August, East Door Police. And the September supervisors reports. Next we have business from the board members and I'll start with Joe.
Uh, we have a meeting, uh, for the, for the. For the sewer district and I'm happy to report that we're, uh, aggressive. The county is. Line. To sculpt and mine, uh, many of the sewer lines to the village or the county to work. We're actually caught off the, uh, fell behind the idea of. Lines last fifty-one years of direct, uh, scoping, I mean. One to two percent of the system every year. Hang that, but, uh, this funding. Project, uh, the, uh. Rehabilitation of the control building, uh, at the, um, plant. Aggressed nicely and. It was before.
So we only have one correct for the town?
District?
Yeah.
Uh, it's really, I believe we are part of.
Geneva, I think is, isn't Geneva a sewer district?
Geneva, well, it has.
I wasn't, are they doing anything with those or?
No, I mean, that's part of, I mean, that's all new.
Yeah.
Wow, they're working up. That's why.
Okay.
He was sleeping. We did.
Well, well, well.
Uh, three, twenty-one. The lines on Green Street and putting the stuff.
Cleanouts.
Yeah, everything's going on.
Good. Good. Jim?
Uh, speaking of Dory, I uh, went and visited uh, our local library, which is always, I uh, sat down, I was able to spend some time. Help out here at the West Falls, and they're very excited about uh, what uh, all of our friends are doing to help West Falls area. Uh, also, uh, we have uh, West Falls Center for the Yard and the Blueberry Farm. We've joined together to work uh, ahead of the fall stuff uh, this weekend. Uh, you know, use it, we are providing, they're gonna utilize it during stage in our parking and uh, we're ultimately, I think, um gonna make uh, especially any access between the two properties a bit easier. And uh, I think it's gonna be exciting, and we're just praying for some good weather this weekend.
But it's gonna be a little colder, but I think it might be dry.
Uh, yeah, uh, cold is okay.
Yeah.
Uh, dry, but.
Yeah. Luke?
Yeah, a couple of things, just sort of, I mean, the New York Forum took most of my time. I'm gonna get to work with the committee. The task force, if uh, we'll set a date if anybody wants to, to uh, be present at that, you're certainly more than welcome to. Let me know, and then we'll coordinate on a date. Um, two things moving forward, Code Red still trying to get the village to um, come to terms or do whatever they need to do to push this through. Um, I'm hoping that we can get something on the agenda this Wednesday, so um, I have a couple of trustees that are now working on this, and hopefully that, that'll give it the extra push. But that means that we will need to move forward with the social media policy. Um, that we, we had a couple drafts before. So I don't know how we wanna move ahead with that, but that's something we should really think about. There are a couple of social media sites that we, their sites or what are they called? Uh, groups that they're currently out there, so even if we do not want to have a Town of Aurora, like one unified uh, group, which is what I would recommend, we still need to have a policy because we are you know, we, we've got a highway page, we've got a recreation page, we've got a historian page, is there anything else that I'm missing? So we.
Something Bridget could work on, social media.
Yeah, and we have some we can send over that uh, to, as a, as a starting point.
Some somebody else's. Knows, we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think the big thing for us would be to understand how we want to use it as a town, so maybe if anyone is really excited about it. I know Joe is a big social media guy, so we can appoint you, you and I and Bridget, we can get together and propose how then we would use our social media for the town. Um, because Code Red would tap into that, you know, it's, I don't think we need Twitter, but if it's something that Code Red believes is a way to get the message out in an event of emergency, and we may want to consider it, so we'll go through all those details, but I, I would hope that that wouldn't be the case.
I just. Um, I did want to add one thing, right? I forgot to mention there was a very wild attended Open Space Committee meeting uh, last week, and that summer. Spurs them a little bit, but they're really taking a hard look at the covered side of art. Uh, keeping their expectations reasonable, uh, what was discussed, what about great design? A wonderful voice out project once upon a time. It's all there. They would also like to plan trail. And touch on sort of all the side of the park, mark. Street right now, there's no time. So they want to get up there and uh, figure out a trail that makes sense. And if there's wet spots, figure out how to mitigate that. It's, it's pretty neat. Want to keep it rural. Um, I want to expose, but they also want people, if they do go there, they have to have a trail.
We may want to think about JP nicely too, because the old trail map in the, the building there is just unreadable, so.
Try to sell that.
Yeah.
Actually, I believe you have a scout, your husband. Doing such thing? I think that.
Yeah, if anybody knows, because I think a, a nice, you know, print it out and put it where the current one is, be, be a good asset. The other thing too is that we'll, we'll continue to look into the ambulance uh, issues and uh, what we as a town can do. Um, I have had contact with um, the county. And so we can start with them and see, but I do think that we need to, as a board, take a deeper look into how we, how this is, how we're going to provide ambulance services five years out, ten years out. Um, it's not gonna be pretty, but I think the writing's on the wall for, for all of now, our fire districts, including West Falls, because they've lost paramedics. Two paramedics, so they're struggling down there as well. South Wales great that we were able to get them ambulance services. They're happy, but it's, it's not quite the level that we that, that I think residents expect when something bad happens. So ultimately, it will probably be a decision for the community. Do you want to pay X to receive Y level of service? Which is, is a tough thing to
Yeah.
to do, but I think we have to at least try.
All good. So that um, trail map at JP Nicely was done by my son twenty-five years ago, as an eagle, as an eagle project. Um, anyways, a couple of meetings ago, the um the library came in and asked if we could find a, a place for storage while we're looking at the building. And I was able to um get the owner of Glead to donate a uh, a space for them. So I just have to coordinate that with them and uh, so as long as they can um as long as they don't rent that area, they've got it and uh, until the building's built, so. And that is that.
Did, did uh, Paul or anyone get the, have they worked on the design at all?
I don't know where that's at, um. Because of the last couple of weeks for me, I, I still getting caught up, but um who's, who's actually uh designing that? Was it Chuck? Or was it? Do you remember?
Paul was, Paul offered to do a feasibility.
Oh, okay. Paul Erst.
Yep.
Okay. Right.
Jim, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, I just want to point out, we passed around a new and a local law, policy.
For what?
For uh
video.
Video. Yeah, I just saw it comes through today, so I didn't bother.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great.
And so we, now that we're talking about that, and I read.
We'll talk about it while you're all in the room, right?
I read through it real quick, but it said, so you could be on vacation, but it's a, a maximum two weeks. Otherwise, it has to be something of medical.
Extraordinary.
Yeah.
A medical an issue with family illness.
And it makes sense, so someone doesn't, you know, go away for the winter. And just call it. But I mean, no, it does make sense and um, but we wanted to have something formal, so if we do go away, then we can still participate. Thank you for.
I think it just depends, uh, to take to the fact that uh, it's not what we're going to. Uh, this is two uh two consecutive weeks per calendar year. So we can play through uh, what the, what calendar year of uh
Would be two consecutive weeks if you were on vacation.
Right.
But if you've had a medical condition or some extraordinary circumstance, I don't think they would count in those two weeks. As I read.
Right, and I, 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 I think I appreciate that part of it, but it's like per calendar year, but it means it ended up that if you want to go on vacation for two weeks or less. Uh, you can still video conferences, that ability to do that, you can only do that a number of times per calendar year. So we play through the first calendar year.
Um.
And we're talking about just for the opportunity to vote.
Exactly.
We could still, we could still tune in, we just.
What? Calendar year.
I guess that's a question, uh, I, I didn't know if the per calendar year referred to, you refer to, you can only well, I think you want the year, point the year.
Uh, the intent of the language is for you to be able to exercise this exception um, up to two weeks of, for vacation, up to two weeks per calendar year.
Okay, so you could do, if you want a vacation for two weeks or less, you could only do it one time.
That was the intention of the language.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. To be able to vote.
To be able to vote, right?
You can still, you can still chime in, but yeah, and participate. But as I understood, that's, that's your voting rights, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And, and it would be a, a month, right? Because two, two weeks, but we have two weeks every, every two weeks, right? So that would probably, that would, two times would be a month. Right? Because if you're missing two meetings, you're actually, you could be gone for a whole month.
Right. I think it meant two meetings.
Two meetings, yeah.
Right?
Two subsequent meetings.
Is that what you're trying to?
Yeah.
Figure out, yeah.
I think.
Why don't you?
And I don't have an opinion on it, I just didn't know what, what they had meant in order.
I, I know it's, now I know what you're.
Advise its attorney on what it would like that to say.
Well, once.
There's a basis, there's a lighting stuff.
But, but you you, you make that up. You've gotten that from state law, right?
Yeah.
No, the, the vacation thing I made up.
Well, you made it up.
State.
I thought that was state law.
Well, there's example from an association of towns. Adjust the this actually will use certain.
Right, and I don't know if you can add that.
Really?
Not the way that the New York State law is written. I'm not sure that you can add vacation part of it.
All right.
What if you're, what if you're at a supervisors conference in Florida?
That's an accidental circumstance.
I, that would be strange, because the towns in, in Florida don't call them supervisors, do they?
Well, they just have it there. Okay.
Hmm.
We gotta work on that. Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And Bridget, rather than us giving um, some, some comments that would be useful, I think we as a board prefer to complain and uh, then forget about it for two weeks, so I think we'll stick with that policy, right? Yeah, it's good, yeah. Yeah.
Undo, undo, undo.
So um
I think we just, I, I haven't.
Go back to the books to see if I'm, if, if you can have a vacation uh, exception. And Martha, you and I'll talk about when, you know.
And I have not looked at it, so I have zero comments.
I looked at it and real quick today. I didn't really digest it, so.
But it's good.
Yep.
I haven't.
It's a start.
But it's good.
Okay, next, we have a long one here. Audience, anyone in the audience would like to address the board, please hit up and okay. Staff reports. That's another one. Let's see, who's here? Liz?
I report on everybody.
Liz's report, attendance has been less than ideal lately, yeah.
Okay, motion to approve the abstract.
Oh, oh, sorry, a question for Liz. Are we looking for another part-time employee or?
As soon as I get that posting together.
Okay.
Um, it's going to be part-time, possible full-time in the listing, because eventually we're gonna switch it to full-time.
Yeah, when you do have that, send it out. I don't have anyone in mind specifically, but we can try to see if there's someone.
I'm gonna post it on the uh, Nager Frontier Building Officials Conference. Um, I could possibly ask for um, you know, New York State Building Officials um uh, to post it there as well. Um, I could possibly even ask the um Western Southern Tier Building Officials um Association to put it there. That's the conference I took last month. Um, but we can put it out in multiple places.
Would we want to advertise in the advertiser, you think, or?
I will put it in the advertiser. Uh, that was not very uh that we, we didn't get a lot of pull from that the last two times we've put that ad in the paper.
Yeah.
So we need to reach further.
Yep.
So that uh, brings up another item that I forgot to talk about is Roger um, is going to, is going to retire. So I'll be doing some interviews for assessors um, in the next couple of weeks. Um, we put it out on the assessor, whatever website and everything. I've got about four to five um, applications, which is a lot um, for assessor. Um so um, we'll see where that goes, but he's gonna um, retire the first year. Um, I think February is his last day. Is that February? Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that have a Rosin?
Well, all our, all our positions do. And if we can't fulfill that position is in a residence, then we can go outside. We, yeah. And I do have one that, one actually person that is a resident. It happens to be Roger's son. Um, but he is, wants to move back and he's an accomplished successor also. But um going to look but he, he wants to make his residence in East Dorf. Um, the other ones are all spaced out all over the place, um. So, very important position. I think it's gonna be even more important as we go forward, especially um, if we ever have to visit uh, the Vival. Um so, so all those qualifications on when we interview, they're gonna be important to us. Um, motion to approve the abstract. Motion by Jim?
Second.
Like my Joe, all in favor?
I opposed.
And then motion to adjourn. Wait a second. All in favor?
I opposed.